Ladies and gentlemen, a quorum is being present. This special town meeting shall now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Adam Loomis. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn to the special town meeting so that we may open the annual town meeting. Motion, do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum being present, this annual town meeting shall now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Adam Loomis. As required by the Massachusetts general laws, the Chief of the Fire Department, Scott Duffy, asked that I point out the exits from the auditorium in case of an emergency. Obviously, the two you came in, and there are two down here. On behalf of the Town of Rockland, I'd like to thank everyone for attending the meeting this evening, so the town can continually to financially manage the budget for the new fiscal year beginning July 1st. It's hard to believe another year has already passed, and we're not wearing masks this year. When we get to Article III of the annual town meeting, the budget, I'll be asking you, the voters, if you have an objection of taking one vote for the total budget. This has been the practice for the past two years. For many years, we have voted on each individual budget for all departments and committees for a total of 56 votes. That's a lot of up and down with your arm and me looking. However, if there is a particular budget or budgets that someone wishes to talk about or has a question, we'll take those budgets one by one and then vote on the total amount. We'll also be voting on the Water Department budget, which is Article VIII, and the Sewer Department budget, which is Article IX, as their funds come from water and sewer revenue. So when I arrive at Article III, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to allow you to look at the budget. I know it's been online, and beginning on page 15 in your warrant booklet. Town Administrator Doug Lapp will give a short overview of the next fiscal year's budget. After that, if we've answered the questions or there are no questions or objections, we will vote on the total budget on page 46. I would like everyone to please stand and remain standing for the salute to the flag in a moment of silence. Retired Selectman Larry Ryan will lead us in the salute to the flag. Mr. Ryan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all.
Moment of silence. Moment of silence. I would now ask for a moment of silence for all of our deceased former town employees and officials who faithfully served the Town of Rockland, for all of our deceased veterans who served in the armed forces, and to all of our deceased residents who died since our last annual town meeting. The special town meeting and the annual town meeting are being videotaped by WRPS. It is required that all non-registered voters present must sit in the forward rows in the section to my left over here. If you wish to speak on an article, please raise your hand. When I recognize you, please come to the microphones down front and state your name and address before speaking. Each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes when speaking on a budget item or article which is being acted upon. No speaker who has previously spoken on the same budget item or article will be recognized until all others who wish to be heard have had their opportunity. Now I'd like to introduce the people on the stage tonight. To my left is our Town Clerk, Liza Landy, Town Council Attorney, John Clifford, Town Administrator, Doug Lapp, and Assistant Town Administrator, Jen Constable. Now I'd like to introduce the newly elected officials who were elected on April 9th. Would you please stand and with the audience, please hold your applause until I have read the list. Select persons: Donna Shadall and Laurie Childs, Member of the Board of Assessors, Diane Molino, Board of Health Member, Michelle Kennedy, Highway Superintendent, David Taylor, Housing Authority Member, Ian Davidson, Library Trustees, Janet Kahn and Carol Mahoney, Park Commissioner, Richard Furlong, Planning Board Member, Michael Corbett, School Committee Members, Emily Davidson, and Dr. Melissa Morrow Small, Sewer Commissioner, Sherri Valley, Treasurer, Allison Sullivan, Water Commissioner, Robert Carvey Jr., and yours truly, the Town Moderator. Now I'd like to introduce the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee. Chairman of the Finance Committee is John Pumphrey. Then we have Robert McDonald, who's been here, this is told me tonight, it's his 20th annual town meeting, as a member of the Finance Committee. Julia Schaefer, Susan Gaines, Cara O'Neil, Megan Rooney, Linda Sternfeld, William Stewart, Joe Gambon, who also serves on the Capital Planning Committee, and William Principi, who also serves on the Capital Planning Committee. We also have from the Capital Planning Committee, Richard Harris, the chairman, Christopher Fulton, Doug Wallo, and Lauren Hanson White. Thank you very much. As I read every year, the two committees worked very hard to prepare the fiscal budget prior to the town meeting, and it obviously was done, it was on the computer this year, on the town's website, so that they want it done so they can have the correct concise information as we progress through town meeting. The Finance Committee, along with the Town Accountant's Office, the Town Administrator, the Board of Selectmen, and all the department heads have again worked hard this year for the best interests of the entire town. And the members of the Capital Planning Committee review articles for capital expenditures over $50,000 and a useful life of at least five years, and with inclusion in a five-year capital improvement plan. It's a lot of work, it's a volunteer thing, and I appreciate all, on behalf of the Town of Rockland, everything those two committees do. Thank you very much. And in case anyone is interested, we do have four or five openings on the Finance Committee. I'd be glad to get a little letter from you and appoint you to the Finance Committee. We could always use some new blood. We had a selectman this year, Laurie Childs was on the committee, she ran for selectman. That's one of the ways, and so it would be great if we could get a few more people involved. I will now swear in my tellers. Would Mary Ryan, Christine Campenil, and Tom Henderson, please come forward? Okay, thank you very much. Now I'd like to call on Finance Committee Chairman, John Pumphrey, to speak.
Good evening, Rockland residents. My name is John Pumphrey, and I am your Finance Committee Chairman. Over the last year, the Finance Committee has met over 20 times in the Town Hall and online to carefully consider the requests from all the different town departments in the administration. I'd like to thank the Finance Committee members, the Board of Selectmen, the administration for the town, and all the volunteers in the town that contribute towards the town budget. It's a lot of people involved. We have room for more, as the moderator said. I would also like to reassure the residents that your Finance Committee has met with each department within this budget. We reviewed their articles, we reviewed their budget, we asked questions. We were not always happy with everything, and we pushed back here and there, and I think we come up with a good budget. Our recommendations are listed for each of the budgets and the articles within the warrant, and we appreciate everyone showing up here today so that we can have a town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting for the purpose of returning to the special town meeting. Do I have a second? All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum is now present. I will now call the special town meeting to order. Chair recognizes Chairman Pumphrey.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that the first action on each article will be on the Finance Committee recommendation.
Do I have a second? All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that all articles are taken in the order in which they are printed.
Do I have a second? All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. If you could turn to page four in the budget booklet, we shall begin. Article number one. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds to sum of $760,170 for fiscal year 2022 budgetary items or take any other action relative thereto? You have them printed before you. Biggest one is snow and ice. It does snow here, unfortunately. These items must be addressed as part of the, the emergency is these items must be addressed as part of the fiscal year 22 budget requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee, and the funding source is the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article I signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number two. Will the town vote to authorize the accounting department to pay the following unpaid bills of prior year as of June 30th, 2021, from the current department budget as listed or take any other action relative thereto? They're all listed here. The emergency, the above-mentioned invoices were unpaid June 30th, 2021, and were not requested in time to meet the deadline to be paid via encumbrances. The invoices should be paid as soon as practical to minimize hardship for the vendors. Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source is coming from the current fiscal year 2022 department budgets. This requires a nine-tenths vote, I'd like to have a unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article II signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that is unanimous. Article number three, and I'm going to read part of this, and there's going to be a motion because this concerns a bond. Bond Council gets involved in this and does the correct wording. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow the sum of $13 million with a like amount from the Town of Abington to pay costs of upgrades to one or more of the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works water treatment plants, including but not limited to the removal of PFAS 6 from drinking water, and to pay for said appropriation to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow all or a portion of said sum pursuant to General Law Chapter 44 or Chapter 29(c) or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, whether through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, or federal or state loan programs or otherwise, and to authorize the town to apply for, accept, and expend any federal or state grants or loans for all or a portion of such amount, including but not limited to entering into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust of the Department of Environmental Protection that may be available for the project or to take any other action relative thereto. Now, Selectman Laurie Childs is going to get up and read a motion based on the recommendation of Bond Council, and this motion has to be read. It's almost the same thing, but this part of it has to be read into the minutes of this meeting. Laurie?
Thank you. I, Laurie Childs, move that the town appropriates $13 million to be expended with a like amount from the Town of Abington to pay costs of upgrades to one or more of the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works water treatment plants, including but not limited to the removal of PFAS 6 from drinking water, and including all costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $13 million under General Law Chapter 44 or Chapter 29(c) or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, whether through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, or federal or state loan programs or otherwise, to authorize the town to apply for, accept, and expend any federal or state grants or loans, including but not limited to entering into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection that may be available for the project, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project.
I have the motion, and I have a second. In the emergency is the Water Department is currently operating under notice of non-compliance from the Department of Environmental Protection. It's requested by the Abington and Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners. Approval is recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee. The funding source is future borrowing from state revolving fund to be repaid by water rates. I need a two-thirds vote on this, I'd also like to have a unanimous, if that's possible. All those in favor of adopting Article III signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you. Article IV. Will the town vote to transfer $448 from free cash to fund 1435 Career Pathways, and $10,638 from free cash to fund 1332 fiscal year 2019 hurricane relief in total of, for the total of $11,086 to fund deficits in these accounts or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, this transfer needs to be made in a special town meeting, so this will no longer affect the town's future free cash certifications. Requested by the Town Accountant, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, funding source, free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article IV signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number five. Will the town vote to approve and expend from the Community Preservation Fund the sum of $20,000 to supplement the appropriation made in Article 41 from the June 22nd, 2020 annual town meeting to rehab and/or construct a remembrance park next to Rockland Town Hall or take any other action relative thereto? This emergency is, the project is currently underway and is experiencing a budget shortfall, thus the funding must be appropriated to successfully complete the project. Requested by the Highway Superintendent, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, and the Community Preservation Committee. The funding source is $20,000 from the Community Preservation Act Fund Balance Reserve. All those in favor of adopting Article V signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number six. Will the town vote to transfer from the Water Stabilization Fund a sum of $100,000 from the water surplus receipts or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, this funding must be appropriated in the special town meeting because the waterworks was not classified as an enterprise fund in fiscal year 2021. Requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approval by the Finance Committee, funding source fiscal year 2021 water surplus receipts. All those in favor of adopting Article VI signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article VII. Will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from the water surplus receipts a sum of $10,000 with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of purchasing or upgrading the computer system or take any other action relative thereto? This funding must be appropriated in the special town meeting because of the waterworks was not classified as an enterprise fund in fiscal year 2021. Requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source FY 2021 water surplus receipts. All in favor of adopting Article Number VII signify with a show of hands. All those in favor, that's a vote. Article number eight. Will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from the water surplus receipts a sum of $30,000 with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of PFAS carbon filter replacement or take any other action relative thereto? This funding must be appropriated in the special town meeting because the waterworks was not classified as an enterprise fund in 2021. Requested by Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approved by the Finance Committee, and funding from the fiscal year 2021 water surplus receipts. All those in favor of adopting Article VIII signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number nine. Will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from the water surplus receipts a sum of $50,000 for the purpose of continuing the water meter upgrade program or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, this funding must be appropriated in the special town meeting because the waterworks was not classified as an enterprise fund in fiscal year 2021. Requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approved by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee, funding source fiscal year 2021 water surplus receipts. All those in favor of adopting Article Number Nine signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 10. Will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from the water surplus receipts the sum of $30,000 for the purchase, for the purpose of making a payment on a five-year lease purchase agreement for a backhoe, front-end loader, or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, funding must be appropriated in the special town meeting because the waterworks was not classified as an enterprise fund in fiscal year 2021. Requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approved by the Board of Selectmen, the Capital Planning Committee, the Finance Committee. Water surplus, it's coming from water surplus receipts fiscal year 2021.
Question.
One second. This is going to be a two-thirds majority for the first year, because it's the first year of a lease purchase. If you have a question, come on down, state your name and address.
My question is, several of these articles are taking money from the water surplus receipts of 2021. Can we find out the total number of surplus receipts from 2021, from which all of this money's coming?
I'll just need one minute, please, thank you.
Yep.
Right now in our reserve, we have 800 and...
Joe, are you the, is it Joe?
Yeah.
Joe, just state your name and that you're the, on the...
Superintendent of the Water Department. Right now we have $850,000 in reserve. We use that money every year for our articles, so we don't have to put half this in our budget, and our budget will come up, and we'd have to raise the rates. These are just from the reserve between, you know, water bills, any systems development. When a developer comes in, they pay us fees, that's how we build up the reserve, then we're able to do the articles through a reserve, so we don't have to put it on the budget.
Great, so that means our water rates won't go up.
They might go up with the $13 million borrowing. We have to pay that money back. So we're not guaranteed $800,000 a year in reserves, just that we were financially responsible. We didn't spend that money in our budget that was approved last year, so it goes in the reserve, and we saved that money. Our budget has to be supported by the water receipts that come in, just the water receipts. That has to support our budget. We try to keep the budget as low as we can, so we don't have to raise those rates. If we do have, we borrowed the 13 million, we might not have to borrow the whole 13 million. We get loan forgiveness, we get SRF loan of 0%. These are all things we're pushing for, any other state grants we can get. We've already received three different grants for the PFAS to reimburse us. We just received a $2.24 million grant to help us with the treatment plant at Myers Ave. We do all this, and like I said, the receipts at the end of the year, if we're frugal with our budget, that can go in my reserve, we can get more done without raising the rates. A lot of this stuff has to be done anyways. We take it out of the reserve, if we don't have it in the reserve, then we have to raise the rates.
So this is all to give us pure water we can drink?
You got it. That's our job.
Thank you.
Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote, because it's the first year of a lease purchase. I'd like to get a unanimous, all those in favor of adopting Article Number 10 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article Number 11. Will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from the water surplus receipts the sum of $100,000 with the like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of upgrading finish and raw water pumping equipment and filters at all treatment plants or take any other action relative thereto? Funding must be appropriated in the special town meeting, as the waterworks was not classified as an enterprise fund in fiscal year 2021. Requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approved by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee, and the funding source is fiscal year 2021 water surplus receipts. All those in favor of adopting Article 11 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 12. Will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from the water surplus receipts a sum of $72,000 for the purpose of sick leave, buyback, or take any other action relative thereto? This funding must be appropriated in the special town meeting because the waterworks was not classified as an enterprise fund in 2021. Requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source fiscal year 2021 water surplus receipts. All those in favor of adopting Article 12 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 13. Will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from the water surplus receipts a sum of $40,000 for the purpose of continuing the survey and testing in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulations governing cross-connections to our water system. 310 CMR 22 dot 22 or take any other action relative thereto? The funding must be appropriated in the special town meeting because of the waterworks was not classified as an enterprise fund in 2021. Requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee, funding source fiscal year 2021 water surplus receipts. All those in favor of adopting Article Number 13 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 14. Will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from the water surplus receipts a sum of $150,000 with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of the sludge management program for the water treatment plants or take any other action relative thereto? Funding must be appropriated in the special town meeting because the waterworks was not classified as an enterprise fund in 2021. Requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee, funding source fiscal year 2021 water surplus receipts. All those in favor of adopting Article 14 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. I would, I would now entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Second, all those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum is present, I will now call the annual town meeting to order. The chair recognizes Chairman John Pumphrey from the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion that all articles are taken in the order in which they are printed.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that the first action on each article will be based on the Finance Committee recommendation.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Okay, now turn to page 14 in your booklet. Will the town vote to cast votes in the annual town election for the election of candidates for the following offices? This is for next year, the next fiscal year. This is for next year, the next fiscal year. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number two, will the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elective officers in the town in the amounts indicated in the department budgets, and make such salaries and compensation effective July 1st, 2022, which is fiscal year 2023, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended? And to raise and appropriate such sums of money for the ensuing year, that all sums be appropriated for the specific purpose designated, that the same be expended for such boards or commissions of the town as voted, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and the funding source will be in the articles. All those in favor of adopting Article two signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Now, we're going to get to the budget. If you've looked at it, had a chance to look at it online, and you have a question about a certain budget, you, we will do that. I'm going to read the article, and then the town administrator is going to give us a, an overview of anything that's contained in the budget that he has thought was the voters should know. So here we go. Article three, will the town vote to raise and appropriate our transfer from available funds as indicated, such sums of money necessary for the ensuing year in the general fund operating budget, or take any other action relative thereto? And the moderator recognizes Doug Lapp, the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Regarding the town budget and all the financial articles, I want to thank our finance team here in town, the treasurer, the assessor, the tax collector, the assistant town administrator, and especially our assistant town accountant, Serena Amaral, for all of her efforts helping with the budget since the town accountant left for another opportunity in early February. We've continued using conservative budgeting principles, not overestimating our revenues nor underestimating our expenses, which has helped us maintain our positive financial position throughout the pandemic. Rest assured, the Finance Committee has reviewed and approved literally every single number in the budget and all the individual articles included in the warrant. Our budget objectives for FY '23 were to continue the, excuse me, discontinue the prior emergency use of one-time funds to balance the operating budget, to implement the results of a wage and classification study for staff in our clerical union, and to begin making inroads in various staffing areas needed in the town for many years. The proposed FY '23 budget before you tonight is responsible. It's balanced, and there are no uses of one-time funds for operating expenses. It reestablishes the wage adjustment account in the selectmen's budget to accommodate the yet-to-be-settled union and non-union wage increases, which is similar to what we did last year prior to the current one-year union contracts that are currently in place. We're still in the middle of union negotiations, but the amount set aside in this account should be sufficient for a reasonable and fair wage increase for our employees in FY '23. Since the union contracts are not yet finalized, they're centralized in this one account and are not reflected in the individual general government budgets. The individual amounts will be allocated to each department after all the contracts are settled. This budget maintains all of our current levels of service, and it also adds staff in some critical areas, which I'll highlight now: police, fire, planning, human resources, stormwater and drainage, veteran services, parks. It also adds a new streetlight maintenance budget and a new McKinley Community Center budget for the building that'll be funded from the general fund. The budget also consolidates landfill monitoring expenses into one budget in the Board of Selectmen. It invests and plans responsibly in various capital and planning efforts for multiple departments, and it includes the first water and sewer department enterprise fund budgets, which were initially authorized as enterprise funds at last year's annual town meeting. And this budget also includes over a $1.5 million increase to our school department operating budget. We're assuming continued receipt of a significant multi-year grant that our regional dispatch center secured from the State 911 Commission to help us hold down our regional 911 dispatch costs, which was submitted with the assistance of our fire department. And lastly, and most importantly, this budget fully repays the remaining OPEB and stabilization funds that town meeting previously borrowed to balance the operating budget during COVID and for the recent purchase of the McCarthy Farm that was pending receipt of the state grant which the town received. So in closing, I want to thank all of you for coming to town meeting tonight. I'd like to thank the school department for all their continued positive relationships that we've maintained with them during this past year, and lastly, thank the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Board of Selectmen, all the department heads, and Town Council for their support, input, and guidance throughout the budget process. We're all on the same page and united to helping Rockland continue to move forward. Thank you.
Now, does anyone have any questions on the budget, or I will read the bottom line, the entire budget? Come up.
Mary Parsons, 754 Union Street. I have actually three questions. I have one question on the new land use budget.
The new, I'm sorry, the new?
Land use budget on page, I think it's 22, on page 22. I would like to amend that to zero that out for this year, keep it as a line item, but we need to know more about what, what's involved in the land use budget, and how much land do we have that we actually need land use planner? So I have an amendment here to just zero that out.
Kevin, can you speak to that? Can you speak to that?
Oh, yeah.
What?
Just the land use, the new land use budget.
Before we go any further, Mary, I have a motion to take the land use budget on page Mary has made a motion to zero that out. Is that completely, Mary?
Yes.
So that the total land use would be zero and not 135?
Yes.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Okay. Mary, you can explain, and then...
I'm asking this because we don't really have enough information, because we used to have a land use planner, and when Prop. 2 and 1/2 came in, he was the first person to get laid off, well, maybe not the first person, but he got laid off. He's currently the person that brings the CBD grant. His name is Wayne Darrell, but he used to be our planner. So I really want to know what's left in town that really needs planning, when we have a ZBA and a, and a planning committee and CONCOM and so on and so forth? Because the $130,000 may be needed for something else during the course of this year. Everything is going up in price.
Are you done?
Yep.
Okay. Now, the town, what, Mary, why don't you sit down for a second?
Okay.
Mr. Lapp?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to make, and I thank you for the question, Ms. Parsons. I'd like to make an introductory comment, and then I'll turn it over to the assistant town administrator, who will provide even further detail. This is one of the positions that I've personally spoken about publicly with the Board of Selectmen, actually since my interview and since the day that I've started. This is a critically important position, not just for the town of Rockland, but for every community. And I'll just go through a quick list of all of our neighbors that all have planners: Abington, Bridgewater, Brockton, Carver, Duxbury, Hanover, Hanson, Hangum, Hall, Kingston, Lakeville, Marion, Marshfield, Middleborough, Norwell, Plymouth, Rochester, Situate, Wareham, the list could go on. It's, it's a critically important position, and it doesn't only relate to undeveloped land, but also to all other aspects of our community. So I'll turn it over to the assistant town administrator, that will provide a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Doug. As, as the town administrator pointed out, that, I just want to put quantify that information. So that's 19 out of 26 local communities that have a planning, have planning staff. Establishing a planning department, so that would be the planner and bringing our current regulatory coordinator to a full-time position, is in fact critically important, as it will assist with priority areas of work as the town itself outlined in its master plan. And that would include work relative to land use and zoning, economic development, housing production, sustainability and clean energy, open space and recreation, as well as cultural and historic resources. A planner would ensure the implementation of currently adopted plans, including Rockland's Smart Growth District, and further implementation of it, its downtown Rockland Action Strategy that's relative to redevelopment along Union Street, housing production plan, municipal vulnerability program, green communities program, and its open space and recreation plan. Typically, municipality staff, conservation, planning, economic development, and even grant management departments, and/or staff including administrative support to oversee all of the aforementioned work. Adding a planner would result in greater efficiency, out-of-town hall and provide the technical knowledge and expertise, some of which is not currently had by staff. $130,000 would also leverage, and is expected to leverage, a significant amount more dollars in grant funds. Therefore, making it a fiscally sound decision, not paying council to attend each, nearly each and every ZBA meeting, which would be attended by the planning staff or a town planner, not contributing to the cost associated with consultants to support any of the above mentioned functions, and further improving the quality of work and life for current staff and volunteer boards and their administration staff, or lack thereof. The planner would also advise boards and staff, as well as committees, prepare reports, review and coordinate applications, and further assist with community engagement. I believe Ms. Parsons mentioned previous planner, they only oversee one program right now, and that is the Community Development Block Grant Program. I know there's been a lot of discussion as well relative to grants in Rockland, which the town has been quite successful in obtaining over at least the past three years. Each of those grants that are received requires implementation, grant management, annual and multiple quarterly reporting. Right now, the town does not have staff to oversee that, and that limits our ability to extend or seek additional grant funds. So I cannot reiterate enough how critically important adding and beginning a planning department would be here in Rockland. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak on this line item, this budget?
Rob Rosa, 474 Beach Street, current chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I just have a question about what our secretary's job is going to be if it goes to a 40-hour. I just, I want to know what our, whoa, hello. Haven't sung into a mic in a long time. I just, I want to know what Deb's position is technically going to be, because right now, she's working, where is she? 19 plus or minus? All right. If we go to a 40-hour position, she'll finally be able to finish everything that she needs to do for the zoning board. If for some reason this town planner decides to take anything, takes any of her time, it's not going to work. It's just, it's not going to work. And he would need his own, or she would need their own secretary, because if you take away any of her time, it's still not going to happen. So that's the issue that I have.
Right now, the regulatory coordinator, which assists the ZBA, is part-time. She is exceptionally taxed, although providing quality service to the ZBA.
Doing a hundred percent the best job that she possibly can with limited, limited direction.
Right. Adding the planner, she may, she may be assisting the planning planner as well, but that would just expand work that comes out of the administrator's office as well. And, and it would provide the ZBA additional, I believe, 20 hours. So it's, it's adding capacity to the ZBA.
As long as it's not taking away any of the time that she needs for a full, from a full-time position to deal with zoning board issues.
Right. The intent, the, the way it will work, as just as the assistant town administrator said, this will be adding additional resources for the zoning board, as well as the planning board, and potentially even the Conservation Commission. One additional point, Mr. Moderator, if I may, I'd like to make as well. I know that housing and affordable housing is a critically important issue for this community. I probably don't have to say anything more about it. I think everybody understands how important it is for a variety of reasons, as it relates to transportation and infrastructure. So instead of being reactive, which is essentially how we're handling housing projects now, we wait for a developer to come in and try to squeeze something in. If we actually had professional planning staff working Monday through Friday, 40 hours a week, that were trained in land use development, understand how, how things work, we could be more proactive and actually interact with developer, developers ahead of time and try to encourage appropriately sized and scaled housing in areas where the community wants it, rather than being reactive to issues that can become very divisive. So that's one example. There's, there's many other examples as well. We've probably all heard about the MBTA Community Zoning Law, which was just passed, which is requiring all communities to set aside and have intact, we're an MBTA-adjacent community, that's how the state deems us, we're adjacent to MBTA. I was just referring to the new MBTA Community Zoning Law that came out, where towns like Rockland, who is deemed to be an MBTA-adjacent community, will have to have zoning in effect in a 50, is it 50 acre, 50 acres with a very much increased density for multifamily housing. That type of initiative is a planner's bread and butter. That's what a planner does, is they help communities figure out how to adopt these kind of changes. Then they work with the volunteer elected planning board members to come up with a proposal that ultimately could be put before public hearings, before voters. Those are just two examples I thought I'd give off the top of my head. I hope that helps.
No, it helps. I just, I know that Deb is busting her butt to, to take care of our board, and I just don't want to see, if, I'd love to see it become a full-time position, I just, I don't want to take any of that time away from the zoning that's needed. That's my, that's just my, that's my biggest thing.
And it won't, it won't.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
We've worked for 20-something years to get to this point, to bring back the people that we need to keep this town working and working cohesively. Everybody that we've added in the last few years has done a tremendous job for the town, and, and we've made tremendous advances. We get grant money coming in on a regular basis. Everything is going relatively smoothly financially throughout the whole town. And these people that we want to add, or the town wishes to add, will only increase that efficiency that the town is doing now. The planning, the, the planning guy will relieve the lawyers from having to go to these meetings that we're paying, I don't know how much we're paying now for those guys, but they, we won't have to pay that as much anymore. This is a very positive thing for the town. The town is, from when I first started on here, it was run by a bunch of family members, good people, but they always just never got along together. Now we have an efficient town with a lot of departments working together positively, holding hands, if you will, as we walk up the trail to, to the, to the point where we want to get to. And it's going along very smoothly now, and I hate to see any, any upsetting the cart now. We've been getting grant money left and right, because we have the people that can apply for them, not only in just the town hall, but the fire department and other places too. There's an awful lot of very positive things going on in the town, and these people that we want to add, and it's, it's with the whole board, basically, and funny, the financial people that say this is a good thing for the town, and it is a good thing for the town. And I would say, if you want to keep going forward, this is how you do it. If you want to go backwards, that's, that's your choice too. But we've been going forward for so long now, and things are going so positively, except for a few minor glitches along the way, Rockland is a great town to live and raise your family and keep it going. along the way, Rockland is a great town to live and raise your family and keep it going.
Kathleen Boyd, 343 Conkett Street. I would like to vote in support of this planner position. We've been very involved with a 19, single-family home PUD in our backyard. We're across the street from the debacle at 320-
Be, be nice, gentlemen.
We are across the street from the 320 Conkett Street debacle, now involved with Our experience attending Conservation Commission, zoning board, planning board meetings, everyone on those departments surely puts in their time, but our experience has been that these boards somewhat work within a vacuum within themselves. There's not a lot of communication between the boards, it's not set up that way. There was a lot of criticism, probably a year ago, January, February, about the selectmen not getting involved and taking a stand and directing things in a certain direction. That's not their position. I had many discussions with Mr. Lapp, and I would vote in support of this planning position. It's something that would be money well spent, get people working on the same lines, have people working for grants, and I'd like to support it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Mrs. Parsons? I'm sorry, Mrs. Parsons, would you give this gentleman, he hasn't spoke yet. I didn't see his hand, and I'm blinded by the light, and it doesn't help that I don't have hair.
Jeff Nigerian, 22 Bradford Street. I wanted to talk about the Veterans Agent Budgets on page 36.
No, we're gonna, Jeff, right now, we're gonna stick on this one idol.
One item?
We will, we will do that when we get to it. Yes, I am. If you can sit in the front row if you'd like.
I'm not asking to kill the thing, I'm just asking you to zero out the budget for one year so that people can take a good look at what a planner is going to do for us, because we already had a planner, and he was laid off. And the CBD grant has been going since 2004. So that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying to kill it, I'm just saying zero it out for this year, just one year. Thank you.
Hey, hey, if you're going to speak, you're going to come down front. I have, I have, I have a motion to move the question. Do I have a second? We have a motion presented to change this from 135,000 to zero, and we had a second. All those in favor of the motion of zeroing this out, the, the total land use budget, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted not to honor that motion, 135,000 stays. Okay, now I'll recognize Mr. Nigerian, who had a question about the veterans. And that is on page 36 of your booklet.
We're going to try again. Jeff Nigerian, 22 Bradford Street, and they want to talk about the Veterans Agent Budget. I don't know if you realize it or not, but in the United States, less than 4% of the people of, of our citizens serving, currently serving, and less than 9% have ever served. So we're a small group, we're a minority, but it's extremely important for the veterans' agents in our towns for the work that they do. Our part-timer right now, Tim White, is doing a great job, but he's only three days a week. We have a loss of continuity. It's, it's extremely important. Not only do they help with Chapter 115, State Rights for Veterans in Massachusetts, but they also are, very, many of them, including Tim, can do federal claims as well, and the majority of the veterans, they need both. And at this time, although it's, part of me is happy to see that there'll be somebody there every day, I think we're heading in the wrong direction by doing part-timer, and, and I'd hate to lose Tim, but I really recommend that, that we need to go with a full-time position. If you could come up with some plan for clerical assistance on that, that's another thing that I thought was going to be in the budget this year, but it's not. But it's something that I, I think we should talk about or think about a little bit, and, and, and get a full-timer in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Lapp?
Thank you, Mr. Nigerian. I appreciate the question, and I'll, I'll be happy to address that. You'll notice that while we are adding significant additional coverage to Veteran Services, the actual increase in the budget is only around $5,000 or so, year to year. And that's because when we hired the current Veteran Services Agent, who was only able to work in town three days a week, we didn't cut that budget because we thought that we might need to get here. We needed to act very quickly when our prior Veteran Services Officer left for another opportunity, and we were fortunate enough to get Mr. White, who works in an abutting community, on very short notice. So we wanted to get somebody in here that was qualified and good at their job as quickly as possible, and again, we left those funds in case we had to expand for the other two days a week. So at one point in time, we had discussed whether to fill the other two days a week, and I should be clear, the current Veteran Services Agent works three days a week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in Rockland. Initially, we had considered possibly an administrative person to provide admin support on the other two days, the Mondays and Tuesdays. That was the admin that Mr. Nigerian was referencing. The more we talked with the veterans in the community, the representatives of the veterans in the community, and our, and our Veteran Services Officer, the more we realized we needed more than administrative support for those two days. We want full Veteran Services Agent coverage five days a week, and that's what this budget does. It gives us full-time coverage, five days a week, but with two people. And I also have a little bit extra detail. Mr. White is at a different town meeting tonight, so he wasn't able to attend, but I thought I would just read a little bit of what he prepared and would be speaking to if he were here. The, the person that we, that we will be hiring is required to be a veteran, as defined by Mass. General Law, Chapter 115. He's required to complete certification at his six-month hire date anniversary. So that means within six months, he'll be a, a fully certified Veteran Services Officer. Now he'll be still reporting, there has to be one captain of the ship, so to speak, so he'll still be reporting to Tim White, who's our Veteran Services Agent, but this other person will not just be administrative, this person will be an equally certified VSO. He'll also be a member of the Massachusetts Veteran Services Officer Association and the Southeastern Massachusetts Veteran Services Officer Association. These groups provide several collaborative training conferences throughout the year. Furthermore, Mr. White will also be training the applicant hands-on. Once trained, that's, the new person will work part-time, cover Mondays and Tuesdays, while Mr. White will continue covering Wednesdays through Fridays. And he also wanted to be very clear that they are dedicated to helping our veterans and their surviving spouses and family members to receive the benefits that they've earned. So I truly believe that, that this addition to the budget will fully meet the needs in the community with full-time coverage with a VSO, five days a week. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the gentleman up back?
John Born, 63 Forest Street. We've always had a full-time Veterans Agent since Vinnie left, and way before, a long time. You have a job description here for a man for two days. This is a regular job description for a full-time Veterans Agent. Also, the town has almost 900 veterans in this town. I just want you to be aware of that. This part-time VSO, when is he going to come aboard? And he's going to, it's going to take a little while for him to be trained, so I say a full-time Veterans Agent for this town is required. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lapp?
Yeah, the intent is that this new person will be starting literally later this week, and I say that because, again, we never cut the budget earlier anticipating that we might need to, to get to this point. So if we don't get all of the funding that's requested tonight, then we may have to scale back some of those hours a little bit. But again, I, I can't stress enough how important we agree that full-time coverage with a VSO, five days a week, and that's what we'll be doing with two people in this department right away. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this?
Hi, Melissa Bergio, 18 Willapon Drive. My question is, based on this budget, and I'm sorry if I missed when you were saying it, but it looks like the agent's going to take a pay cut to make way for this second spot, is that correct?
Sure. I'll be, I'll be happy to explain that. He's not taking a pay cut. That salary, that $57,000 was for a full-time agent, so he's only working three days a week, so he's currently bringing, earning three fifths of that amount. So that's how, that's why it goes to 40. So again, we didn't want to cut this budget earlier because we thought we might, we might need to end up in this place. And I should also highlight, our first choice was to have our current Veterans Agent take this on full-time, five days a week. He's committed as a, as a part-time Veterans Agent in another bordering community, and he didn't want to leave them high and dry. So we respect that.
Yeah, I hear that, I'm sorry.
So no, he's not taking a pay cut, those funds are still available in the budget.
Okay. I'm a proud daughter of a Vietnam Vet, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I'm pretty sure our charter says that we have to have a full-time Veterans Agent. I'm pretty sure we made that change several years ago.
At present, I don't have a motion on the floor. From what I can read here, and I'm only reading what's in the book, that apparently we have 62,500 for five-day-a-week coverage, is from what I can understand. I do not have a motion on the floor to do anything, therefore unless, and I, I don't think we have, I have no way of doing anything other than leaving things the way they are. Mr. Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Clifford, Town Council. The charter actually says that there has to be a Director of Veteran Services, it does not require that there be one person full-time. Thank you.
If no more questions and no motion, I, I don't know what I would take a motion on at this point. So I hope it's answered your question, Mr. Nigerian, to your, to the best of their ability. And now, does anybody else have a question on any part of the budget?
Mary Parsons, Union Street. I have two questions on Article 8 and Article 9 that have to do with the water budget and the sewer budget.
We're not there yet, Mrs. Parsons.
Okay, so you want to, want me to wait till we get there?
Yes, yeah, that, they're in their own articles because of the way they're set up.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no more questions about the entire budget, except for the water and sewer that are in their own articles, seeing none, the grand total budget for fiscal year 2023 Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, funding source raised and appropriate and/or transfer. All those in favor of adopting Article 3, the entire budget, and the amount that I read, signify with a show of hands? All those opposed, that is a vote. Article number four, will the town vote to transfer the sum of $175,000 from free cash as certified July 1, 2021, to the Open Trust Fund? Other post-employment benefits or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, funding source free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 4, signify with a show of hands? All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number five, will the town vote to transfer the sum of $665,000 from free cash as certified July 1, 2021, to the General Stabilization Fund or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article number five, signify with a show of hands? All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number six, will the town vote to transfer the sum of $100,000 from free cash as certified July 1, 2021, to the Capital Stabilization Fund or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 6, signify with a show of hands? All those opposed, that is a vote. Article number seven, I am not going to read the entire part of Article number seven. Will the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, as most recently amended, to amend the general bylaws by inserting a new bylaw establishing various revolving funds specifying the departmental receipts to be credited to each fund, the departmental purposes or programs for which each fund may be expended, and the entity authorized to expend each fund such by law to provide as follows? And it lists the purpose, the expenditures, the interest, procedures, and reports, and you have the authorized revolving funds that take into many departments and some committees. And further, for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2022, these revolving funds be authorized to expend the amounts shown below, which on page 45, you have a list of all the departments. The one I always remembered because of my children was the Youth Commission, they take the money in, they pay for their health from it. The Board of Health does it, the Recycling Center, and so on and so forth. It's requested by the town accountant, this is the update under the Massachusetts General Laws Department of Revenue, this is the reason this is all in here this year. Approval was recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, the funding sources, the service fees related to each fund. All those in favor of adopting Article 7, signify with a show of hands? All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number eight, will the town vote in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 and a half, to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds, $3,495,408 to be expended under the direction of the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works Board of Water Commissioners, for the purpose of establishing the Enterprise Fund Budget for the Water Department effective fiscal year 2023, with $3,335,431,000 for the Water Department operating budget, and an additional $159,976 to be transferred to the General Fund Operating Budget for indirect expenses as shown below or take any other action relative thereto? You have a list of all their accounts, how they're going to spend, what that $159,000 is about. It's requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works, Board of Water Commissioners, recommended by the Finance- recommended by the Finance Committee, the funding source is water revenues, and the chair recognizes Mrs. Parsons.
What I would like to know is why there isn't a full budget in, with these two accounts like there is for all the other budgets, because I'm seeing where there's direct and indirect expenses, but I'm not seeing what the town itself is paying for water usage for all the buildings, like the Town Hall, Fire Department, Police Department, schools. I'm seeing these funds being spent for something that we already pay for out of our real estate taxes, which is audit and OPEB, treasurer, tax title, payroll fees, collector, information technology, Microsoft licensing, Medicare, and it's taking money away. It's transferring money from those fees to the General Fund.
Mr. Lapp.
Sure, thank you for the question, Ms. Parsons. So this, these two enterprise fund budgets for water and sewer, it's the first time we're seeing the budgets presented this way, because this is the first year that we're actually voting the budgets as enterprise fund budgets. This was constructed exactly to mirror the model Department of Revenue language, both in format, the level of detail, and in substance, the indirect cost allocations. These are all taken directly from Department of Revenue guidelines for enterprise funds.
So what is the town paying for water and sewer uses? Because from what I understand, they're not billed for those.
I don't know off the top of my head what each building is charged or not charged for water, but the purpose of this article is to vote the appropriation to fund the enterprise fund for the water works.
Right, but that would mean the budget should be, what is it? For water would be $3,335,431,000 for the Water Department operating budget and not remove $159,979.30 to be transferred to the General Fund operating budget. This is money that we pay as taxpayers, and now it's being removed, and then we're going to be told that at some point we may be raising rates, only to take more money away when the town itself or all the buildings and the water usage in the town is not paying a dime, but they're charging the Water and Sewer Department for these expenses.
I think, and I'll let, I'll have Mr. LaPointe, or ask Mr. LaPointe to speak in a minute, but I think another way to look at it is that the, the water works will have to pay for these functions one way or the other. So it's either through indirect with the town, or I guess instead of going to Town Hall to pay, you know, your water bill, you'd have, they'd have to hire some other billing entity to do it. So I'm not really following where you're going, but I'll ask Mr. LaPointe if he has more to add.
Yes, Doug, that's correct. If we didn't pay these indirect costs to the Town Hall, we'd have to, number one, hire our own accountant, which would be $80,000 a year. We utilize the IT department. They come down and anytime we have a problem. Same with the tax, the collectors, the tax collectors. All the departments we use up there, they cut all our paychecks, they handle all the insurances, and that's, the Water Department pays those indirect costs, that's what that covers. Otherwise, we'd have to have our own HR person. I mean, it would probably cost the Water Department, rough guess, 250 to 300,000 extra a year. We do this in both towns. Abington's the same way. They don't do as much as Rockland does to us. Their indirect cost is like, I think, 85,000. But they process our bills when we do the warrants through the town accountant and everything else, so that's what the indirect costs cover.
But my point is, if you're, we're already paying these expenses, okay, for the town anyway. I do remember the day when the money went to the Water Department, the money went to the sewer. It stopped being that way because of sewer embezzlement. But my point is, the town itself is not paying you for water, but they're charging you for a service that we already pay them to do. We already pay for that service. If, even if you didn't, we're still paying for them to do that service for you.
But they'd be paying that extra amount, so if we're paying a certain amount to the town.
No, you shouldn't be. I remember when this came in.
Excuse me, before we go any further, Town, Town Council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Can't hear you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As a matter of law, we are now operating water and sewer enterprise funds. And as a matter of law, these two departments have to be self-sustaining within revenues received for water services and sewer services. So they have to reimburse the town for any additional expenses that are incurred strictly as a result of operating or assisting the Water Department or assisting the Sewer Department. So assessing indirect cost is not an option. It's something that the town has to do. It's, it's very common, as Mr. LaPointe, I think Mr. Lapp said, it's, this is how enterprise funds operate.
So you're getting free water, and they're getting billed for it. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions on Article number eight? Seeing no other questions, all those in favor of adopting Article 8 signify with a show of hands? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number nine, will the town vote in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2, to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds $3,6,470.40 to be expended under the direction of the Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners for the purpose of establishing the Enterprise Fund budget for the Sewer Department effective fiscal year 2023 in the amount of, with $2,952,780.17 for the Sewer Department operating budget, with an additional $53,690.23 to be transferred to the General Fund operating budget for indirect expenses as shown below or take any other action relative thereto? It's requested by the Sewer Commissioners, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, funding sources from sewer revenues. All those in favor of adopting Article 9 signify with a show of hands? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number 10, will the town vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2023? With each item to be considered, a separate appropriation as follows. The appropriations from fiscal year 2023, revenues for committee administrative expenses, $32,631.48, and the reserves are listed below. Three of them are at $62,262.96, and estimated revenues for budget reserve, $424,209.23, or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Community Preservation Committee. Finance Committee recommends deferring to the Community Preservation Committee. Is somebody here from the CPA?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve O'Donnell, 71 Winding Way. This is really standard, we have to do this every single year to allocate funds to the CPA Reserve Fund, which we voted on a number of years ago. Standard allocation to the housing, open space, and historical funds is 10% of our funds. We allocate five to administrative funds. We've used those funds in the past for things like land assessment and surveys. We did it with McCarthy Farm as well. Those come in very handy, required postings to Patriot Ledger, Enterprise, that kind of thing. Any questions happen, answer them.
We're going to need a motion to, motion to adopt or whatever.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to adopt? Is that where you're going?
Motion to adopt Article 10 is written.
Do I have a second? Funding sources fiscal year 2023 estimated receipts. All those in favor of adopting Article 10 signify with a show of hands? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 11, will the town vote to transfer $85,000 from Article number 48 from the June 22, 2020 Annual Town Meeting, and an additional $15,000 from the Community Housing Reserve Balance to fund the creation of affordable housing units at Copley Gardens located at 105 Market Street or take any other action relative thereto?
Questions?
Hold on, I will take you, it's requested by the Community Preservation Committee, approval recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and Finance Committee. The funding source is $85,000 to rescind and reappropriate Article 48 from 2020, June 22, 2020 Annual Town Meeting, and 15% from the CPA Community Housing Reserve Balance. Yes, if you'd like to come down and speak.
Deborah O'Brien, Eleanor Lane. This address here, this is already an apartment complex that is totally being renovated. My question is, are we going to be paying people's rent with this? Are we going to end up owning it? It sounds to me that, sorry, this property is totally being renovated now. Is this, are we going to be buying this to pay people's rent? Is this what this article stands for? Or is this to make our quota on affordable housing? It's very confusing what you're trying to do because it already is subsidized housing. So what is the real direction? Are we going to end up owning this where the Commonwealth already does?
I need Jennifer, either Jen or and/or CPA member. Jen, you can speak first. I don't care who speaks first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So no, we will not be paying rents with this money. This money is actually funding the creation pursuant to the eligible activities under the Community Preservation Act, bringing an additional 10 units of market rate housing at Copley Gardens to become affordable units. So we will not be paying rent. It's a one-time payment towards the rehabilitation of those, those units and making them affordable units. And yes, those units will also count to the, towards the town's subsidized housing inventory, that 10% number of the overall housing stock, which you referenced.
I'll have the Community Preservation Act Committee explain it.
Steve O'Donnell, 71 Winding Way. I think, so there's two pieces to this article. One is rescinding money that was going to be used for a COVID rent relief fund, which would have helped with rents. That wasn't applied due to the administration costs, as we looked into that as a town. And then the state came out with some additional funds that far surpassed anything that we as a town could have offered. I will say this is, aside from that COVID-19 relief fund effort, which is mostly funding this initiative for $100,000 for NeighborWorks to help build those 10 new, or renovate those 10 new, and really introduce 10 new affordable housing units to the town. This is really the first article that we, as the CPA, have been able to fund out of our housing reserve balance, which we're required to have. Again, 10% of our annual funds go into that balance. You know, we'd like to use more of that money. This is really the only request we've seen in the few years that I've been on the board.
But these, these 10 units already exist, right?
They already exist, they were not affordable housing.
But most of this, this project.
You got to go up to, ma'am, you got to go up to the microphone.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. But is it, my understanding was that this place, Copley Place, was already affordable housing, the whole thing, because most of the people in there are subsidized? So why are we doing this if it's already subsidized?
Yeah, so it's my understanding that not all of the units are affordable housing. It's 60% of the median income. We do have representatives from NeighborWorks, if you'd be okay having them come up and answer the, the question on, I guess, how much of that is affordable?
Just state your name and where you're from, sir. Not address, but the company or whatever.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Corley. I'm the CEO of NeighborWorks Housing Solutions. And to answer your question, the, the property is 83 units, of which 20 are market rate units. And what we're proposing is to make 10 of those, of those 20 become permanently affordable and income restricted. So it'd be, the entire property is not affordable. So those units are currently not rent restricted or income restricted.
One-time shot? One-time deal, or is this going to be a forever thing?
It's a permanently restricted, yeah.
Not the money-wise, just one-time shot, money-wise?
Yeah, we're, we're asking for this support for 10 units. And you're right, we are currently renovating the entire complex. We took it over two years ago, and so we've been waiting quite a while to do this.
Thank you.
And one more, Mr. Clifford?
I think some of the confusion arises from what we're trying to categorize this housing stock as affordable within the state's definition for the purposes of 40B. So how much they're charging for rent now, whether or not they're subsidized, isn't relevant to that. So part of this, as I understand, it would be a deed restriction that says that these units have to be categorized as affordable forever, which, and people have to meet income restrictions for that. So they'll count towards our inventory.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on Article 11? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Article 11 signify with a show of hands? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 12, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $123,860 to complete the Beach Street Recycling Center road upgrades or take any other action relative thereto? This is requested by the Board of Health and the Highway Superintendent. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee. Funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 12 signify with a show of hands? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 13, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $75,000 to fund town capital projects or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Town Administrator. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee. Funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 13 signify? Question?
Yes.
Can you name the capital projects that you want this money for?
Hi, Ms. Parsons. Thank you for the question, I appreciate it. I don't have an exact list of what this funding will be used for, but I can tell you what the funding has been used for in the past couple of years, and it gives you a sense of the types of things this is, this funding is used for. As we've renovated the garage at Town Hall, we've used it to purchase shelving. We've done electrical repairs at Town Hall. We've done painting. There have been security system alarms put in various buildings, including at the Parks Department and the Veterans Memorial Stadium. We've upgraded air conditioning in different offices. We've done envelope repairs on the buildings at the Highway Department. We've covered a little bit of the cost overrun on the road construction project at the Recycling Center. We've dealt with plumbing repairs at the library, ceiling repairs at the McKinley Building, and some drywall repairs at the fire station. So it's not as though I have a crystal ball and can tell you everything that's going to, going to break next year, but these are the types of things that this funding is helpful to have in a capital article so that we can cover these things as they come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Article 13 signify with a show of hands? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 14, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds $22,886.75 to fund three of, three-year lease purchase for the fire, year three of three-year lease purchase agreement for the Fire Department Administration vehicle or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Fire Department. Approval recommended by Capital Planning and Finance. Funding source free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 14 signify with a show of hands? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 15, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $275,000 to purchase and equip an advanced life support ambulance or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Fire Department. Approval recommended by Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee. Funding source marijuana host community agreement special purpose stabilization fund. I need a two-thirds majority. I'd like to get a unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article 15 signify with a show of hands? All those opposed? That's unanimous. Article 16, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $70,000 to purchase and equip a pickup truck for the Fire Department or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Fire Department. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee. Funding source marijuana host community agreement special purpose stabilization. Funding source, Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. Again, I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of adopting Article sixteen signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article seventeen, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase and equip a new pumping engine for the Fire Department or take any other action relative thereto? The approval was recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee. The funding source, five hundred thousand dollars from free cash and a hundred and seventy-five thousand from the Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. I need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of adopting Article seventeen signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article number eighteen, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of fifty thousand dollars to repair flooring at the fire station or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Fire Department. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee. Funding source, free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article eighteen signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article nineteen, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the fuel management system at the highway facility or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Department. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee, and the funding source is from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article number nineteen signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number twenty, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to fund Phase Two road improvements to spring, summer, and beach, and beach street curbs and walkways or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Department. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee, and funding source from free cash. Mrs. Parsons?
Can you tell me what's left of the twelve million dollars that we had a debt exclusion for, for the funding of the roads? Because if I'm not mistaken, these roads were on that list. So I'd like to know what's left from that.
Dave Taylor, you're here, right? Come on down.
I don't believe it was twelve million dollars, but there is no money left over from the bonds from the roads.
There was twelve million dollars, and Forest Street's on that, too.
Forest Street is getting done this year.
Well, that's what you said last year, too. But no, I'm pretty sure these are on it, and we need to know exactly what's left.
There is no money left?
There's no money.
No. But also because of the Forest Street project, that, what we got done last year was power mentor, which had to be a complete reclaim, drainage, as well as sewer upgrades. Also, on the other end is Pleasant Street, which is part of that road improvement project. That, again, was also upgraded as far as drainage, and that was also a full reclaim there. So we could do Forest Street altogether. Also, on, due to the Academy slash Hocking Rink, we've requested remediation from the Hocking Rink, which is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That is also being used for the road improvements at Forest Street because of the extension that they've asked to cut into the roads there. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure what Mary's question is. She's asking if there was anything left over from the two thousand and sixteen road, road improvement article. There is nothing left over, so.
Any further questions on Article twenty? All those in favor of adopting Article twenty signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-one, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of a hundred and eighty thousand to fund the micro-surfacing of roads, Forest, Lincoln, Power Mentor, Daring Square West, Pleasant, Howland, Beach, and Spring, or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Department. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee. The funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-one signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-two, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of eighty-eight thousand to replace a nineteen ninety-seven International Dump Truck or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Department. Approval recommended by Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee. Funding source, free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-two signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Will the town vote, Article twenty-three, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds seventy-five thousand to replace a nineteen ninety-seven International Fuel Service Truck or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Department. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee. Funding source, free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-three signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-four, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of fifty thousand dollars to complete masonry work at the community center or take any other action relative thereto? We're talking about the McKinley School, Mr. La... Okay, McKin, the old McKinley School where I went. Requested by the Recreation Department. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and Finance, and funding source free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-four signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-five, will the town vote to transfer to the General Fund from the Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund the sum of ninety-eight thousand dollars to purchase and equip two police crews or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Police Department. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee. The funding source should read Marijuana Host Community Agreement Fund Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. I need a two-thirds for this. I'd like a unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-five signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article number twenty-six, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds one hundred thousand dollars, thereby allowing the school department to enter into a five-year lease purchase agreement to fund the replacement and upgrading of school department computers and any technology related, or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the School Committee. Approval recommended by the Board of Selectmen, Capital Planning Committee, and Finance Committee. The funding source is free cash. Because this is the first year of a five-year lease purchase, I need a two-thirds majority vote. I'd like a unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-six signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article number twenty-seven, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of eighty-four thousand dollars, thereby allowing the school department to continue to pay various lease agreements for various school department student transportation vehicles or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the School Committee. Approval recommended by the Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee. Funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-seven signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-eight, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of seventeen thousand dollars, thereby allowing the Park Department to purchase a one-ton roller for the field maintenance or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Park Commissioners. Approval recommended by the Finance Committee. Funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article number twenty-eight signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number twenty-nine, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of seventeen thousand, thereby, seventeen thousand dollars, thereby allowing the Park Department to purchase a utility vehicle with a dump bed or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Park Commissioners. Approval recommended by the Finance Committee. Funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-nine signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number thirty, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars, thereby allowing, thereby allowing the Park Department to build and acquire a storage building for the Park Department or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Park Commissioners. Approval recommended by the Finance Committee. The funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article thirty signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article thirty-one, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of twenty thousand dollars, thereby allowing the Park Department to purchase a generator for the Park Department or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Park Commissioners. Approved by the Finance Committee. Funding source, free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article thirty-one signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article thirty-two, will the town vote to transfer from Article eight of the September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one special town meeting the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents to help fund wastewater treatment plant repairs and/or collection systems projects, including but not limited to the following: affluent meters, infiltration and inflow remediation, engineering related to the above projects, and/or federal and state permit compliance to take, or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Sewer Commissioners. Approval recommended by the Board of Sewer Commissioners, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee. Funding source is reallocation or prior appropriation. All those in favor of adopting Article number thirty-two signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article thirty-three, will the town vote to approve and expend from the Community Preservation Trust, I'm sorry, the Community Preservation Fund the sum of eighty-three thousand six hundred dollars for rail trail improvements, included but not limited to completing the rail ta, rail trail signalization project or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Community Preservation Act Committee. Approval recommended by the Finance Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, and Community Preservation Committee. Funding source, eighty-three thousand six hundred dollars from the Community CPA Fund Balance Reserve. All those in favor of adopting Article thirty-three signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Before we get to the last article, I really appreciate the number of people who came out tonight for the town meeting. It was more overwhelming. You gave up some time, and it's so nice to see people coming, people coming together that care about your town and all your departments. So thank you very much for coming out tonight. Article number thirty-four, will the town vote to amend Part One of the town's general bylaw, Chapter one oh four dash one, composition of boards and committees by inserting a proposed new general bylaw, Item M, as follows, or act as anything relative thereto? All meetings of town boards, commissions, and committees shall be broadcast live and are recorded for future broadcasts over the local cable television network and shall be available for online viewing. Said recordings may include but not limited to WRPS video recording or online teleconferencing applications such as Zoom. Recordings of the meetings shall be available online and at no charge for viewing and do not, and do not supplant written minutes. Requested by petition. I have no action. Come on up.
Sherri Valley, four-eleven Pond Street. I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight, and I urge you...
Ms. Valley, before you go any further, I need a motion, and I need a motion on what we're going to do with this.
Sorry. Motion to pass?
Motion to adopt?
Yes.
I have a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now you can go ahead, Ms. Valley.
Okay. I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight, and I urge you to pass this article. Its purpose is to provide fair and equal access to all board meetings, commission meetings, and committee meetings. It does not require a live broadcast for each meeting, but it does require a recording. This article is similar to an article that was passed in Fairhaven. Currently, meetings are often at the same date and time. This presents, prevents residents from attending both meetings. Meeting minutes can sometimes fail to capture the full flavor of the meeting, and sometimes they're not provided at all. There's been some discussion about the costs that might be involved with this article. I suggest that they can be minimal by using the person who's taking the minutes to facilitate the recording. They can use volunteers to run the cameras, or we could use some of the funds that we just passed from Article thirteen. In July, state law will require all meetings to be in person. By recording these meetings, we will enable a better understanding of decisions made and money spent. We will allow residents to see all the meetings at their convenience, and will encourage greater participation in all things Rockland. So again, I urge you to pass this article to promote full disclosure and transparency in our government.
Does anyone here from WRPS? You asked to speak, Lisa? This is Lisa Breeden. She's not a Rockland resident, but she's now taking over for, is going to be taking over for Dave Cable Murphy, who served us for a long time and all the work he did for us. He was, he's, he just did a great job for us. So Lisa, could you, you wanted to, Dave wanted you to speak, or you wanted to speak? So the floor is yours.
Both. Thank you very much. Yes, and I intend to uphold the same professionalism and integrity that Dave always has, so you won't have to worry about that. This on paper sounds okay, and it sounds very important as far as making sure that people are aware of what's going on in town. But that's where the minutes come in, and that's not our responsibility, really. We cover quite a bit of meetings, but it's not all that we do. We are a staff of three, one, two, three. And so sometimes there are three and four meetings going on at the same time in different locations, and it's impossible. That's where this becomes not feasible to request that this be part of the legislation in town. And I know it's not completely directed at us, but you're asking us to facilitate at least what's going to happen with the recordings after the fact. It just, it's going to add a lot more work to what we already do. We come in early, we stay late, we stagger our hours, we work weekends, we do a lot already, and we're tapped. There's just no way that we can cover that many more meetings without adding staff, without potentially adding, you know, equipment, technology, all of the things that require funding, which has not mentioned anything anywhere here. This can't pass as written. Perhaps if you write the, you know, take the word "all" off, maybe it could pass, but really that would just be a statement of what we already do already. So I can't, you know, speak enough about why it doesn't take enough into consideration. The other thing it doesn't take into consideration is commissions, committees, these things, they can be created out of thin air, and all of a sudden, within the next six months, we could have ten more. And who's to say that they're not going to want to meet twice a week in two different places? It's just, it doesn't allow for any of the moving parts that go along with what we do to be, you know, I guess, acknowledged. And, you know, the other thing is, there was a little bit of discussion over the weekend. I was getting messages from my staff about things that were being said on social media, which, you know, again, it's like Monday morning quarterbacking, right? It's like, if you aren't part of this organization, you probably don't know everything about how it works. I think a lot of people think if it's a one-hour meeting, well, that's just a one hour of our time, and that's not the case. It's usually about three hours per meeting, because there's a lot of stuff to do ahead of time, there's a lot of stuff to do after the fact. It takes time to, you know, export meetings, upload them to our servers, that we can air them on TV, upload them to YouTube. And I think that's stuff that just kind of gets overlooked in general. So meetings is not all what WRPS does. We do a lot for this town. We have always done a lot for this town. We're a Class A, a hundred and five watt FM station. We've been so since nineteen seventy-four. We also support the schools as far as events, coverage like this, and also things like, you know, graduation, athletics, all the plays, musicals, things like that. We do all of that. If we just focused on meetings, all that would go away, and we would potentially have to add staff. So if you're saying yes to this, you're saying no to everything else, and you are basically trying to eventually look for funds to support us having to cover every single meeting, when we don't know how many more committees and commissions could come up at any time. So just the way it's written, it sounds great on paper. It sounds like, yeah, of course, who doesn't want to have all the information recorded at your fingertips? But really, in funding-wise, staffing-wise, time-wise, it's just not feasible. There is a solution, and she did mention it. We, as the local access for the town of Rockland, we offer a service. I don't know if people are aware, but anybody here, residents of the town of Rockland, at any point during business hours, can come and can meet us, and we will give you training on how to use camera tripod, Mary Parsons knows quite well. We have plenty of cameras. We have plenty of solutions to this. You can come and borrow it. We will gladly give it to you. Go and cover a meeting that you think is so important that has to be covered, that for some reason within our schedule we cannot. We welcome it. And part of what we do as local access is provide that service as an education, and we welcome it. That's, that's the only... That's... that's the only solution I can kind of come up with. So as this is written, I don't believe it's viable, but there is a workaround. It's not, you know, we haven't totally lost hope, so... and I encourage you, anyway, reach out to us. We do a lot of stuff, and we, you know, make copies of things for people, and we cover things if they ask, so... and we're nice, so... so definitely, you know, come and... come and meet us. We're open, we're accessible. We've never been, you know, trying not to cover things or anything like that. That is not what we do. We actually do the opposite. We're always looking for ways to improve technology and our quality and the things that we can give to this town that we love to service, so... thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, I... I can't see up here, but State Representative Dave Decoster's here and State Senator John Keenan, and I'd like to thank him for coming tonight. Does anyone else wish to speak on Article 34? Currently, we have a motion to approve. Chairman of the Finance Committee, John Pumpfree.
John Pumpfree, 325 Howard Street. Just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that we did consider this article in our review of the warrant, and unfortunately, it was presented... or I should say, it wasn't presented. No one came to the meetings. Our meetings are posted, and our agendas are posted, so no one did come to the meeting to discuss the article. And secondly, there was no funding source provided, so therefore, we can't recommend or provide a recommendation. Plus, we don't know how much it's going to cost. It could be something where equipment's needed. We just don't know any of those particulars, so... similar to what the woman from WRPS said, a lot of good intention behind this, but we couldn't... we basically voted to pass it over. It didn't make the warrant, but we did vote to pass it over only because of the fact that we don't have anything to vote on. So those are... just wanted to share those thoughts.
Thank you. Mrs. Parsons?
As Lisa said, I am one of those people that volunteers to video-record certain meetings, but the problem that's being encountered is that you will have a selectman meeting now on a Tuesday night, which is also a conservation commission meeting, which has also become, I think, a ZBA meeting from time to time. But it used to be that these boards were a little more spread out, like planning would be on a Wednesday night, conservation was Tuesday night, selectmen were Monday night. What we're running into, there's three and... three and four meetings all in one week on one night, night after night after night, and people should have the right to be able to attend at least as many as possible. That's why this... this article came up. So yes, it needs volunteers. It does need work, but there's also such a thing as Zoom meetings. So this may be something to look into, how to get that done. It's probably a minimal cost, but in terms of pass this and see what we can work out, it doesn't mean it's going to be everything all at once. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that I do appreciate everything that WRPS does, and it's not my intention to put the burden of this on WRPS. Again, I would suggest that there are probably persons in town that could contribute to the solutions, as well as, again, some of those funds from Article 13.
Gentlemen over here.
Steve O'Donnell, 71 Winding Way. In principle, I think this is a great idea. However, I think, you know, we've already been talking about funding. This is going to require additional resources to be able to man this. If we do do it on a volunteer basis, then I have concerns with how do you, as a... as a chairperson of a committee in town, how do you rely on those individuals to be available if it's codified in law, that we can't hold a meeting without recording to schedule that meeting? It's going to make it very difficult, and there may be important issues that get delayed because of not having those resources. And then thirdly, I want to touch on the Zoom issue. So right now, we have an emergency order that we can meet via Zoom as the open meeting law. That expires, I believe it's July 15. After that, we don't have Zoom as an option. If you do want to see that, I highly recommend you reach out to your state representatives to codify that as permanent, but after July 15, we don't have that option anymore. We'd need to be in person. We would need those volunteers, or we would need to spin up WRPS's budget to be able to support this, or some other department in order to fully support this. Thank you.
Not seeing any further discussion. The first motion I have is to approve the article, and I had a second. All those in favor of adopting Article number 34 as written signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted not to adopt this article.
Pass.
You don't even have to do that. I need a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yay!
Thank you for coming.